...the second inning, an hour later.
Tom, we've got four mics going now, so you might need to adjust something in you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Lacy Township. This will be our caucus meeting. I'll read the statement, and then we will say the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, Exelon's presentation to the Forked River Fire Company.
Now, we do this, Peter, and just, uh...
Face the camera.
Face the camera?
Yes, face the camera would be the best, yes.
And we're very pleased that we provide this check, fifteen thousand dollars, to the volunteer fire company. We take great pride in being members of the community, and we enjoy being a big part of the community.
I had a big pleasure to accept it, and I'd like to thank Exelon for always being a good neighbor to us. You can always help us out whenever you can. It's our pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There you go.
Pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You've been great corporate partners, and we have the entire township. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm killing them.
Thank you.
Just like to have a brief comment if I could. Exelon has been a great corporate partner for many, many years in our township. Their largesse is extended to some of our fields and some of our civic organizations, all over our town, fire, EMS. It has been going on for a long, long time, and we're grateful to have them as corporate partners. They more than extend the hand of friendship to Lacy Township when in need, supplement our budget. I know that everyone, including myself, absolutely loves the fireworks on Fourth of July, but for their largesse and their outreach, we wouldn't have that. That's a large item. I think it's about ten thousand dollars every year, correct?
Correct.
So, again, we're very, very grateful. So, I want to thank them publicly, as I often thank them privately. So, just to be above board, we're very grateful. Again, would anything, committee like to have any comments?
You said it, Pastor.
Yes.
Very good.
I hope that Exelon is a major factor in this town for years to come.
Well said. Item number two, proclamation for Child Abuse Month, presented to the Women's Club of Lacy. I'd like to read a proclamation if I could. Whereas we all have responsibility as individuals and neighbors, community members, citizens of Lacy Township, to help create healthy, nurturing, and safe experiences for children; and whereas child abuse is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, income levels; and whereas healthy and safe childhoods help produce confident and successful adults; and whereas child abuse and neglect often occur when people find themselves in stressful situations without the resources and don't know how to cope; and whereas children who grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average; and whereas it is recognized that no person can do everything, but that everyone can do something; and together we can create change for the better; and whereas effective prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among nonprofit organizations, government agencies, volunteer organizations, schools, service clubs, houses of worship, law enforcement agencies, and the business community; and whereas Child Abuse Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing child abuse and show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims; and whereas displaying a pinwheel or planting of a pinwheel garden in April will serve as a positive reminder that all children deserve great childhoods, happy and healthy and safe. Now, therefore, I, Peter Curatola, mayor of the Township of Lacy, on behalf of myself and the entire township committee, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty-seventeenth, twenty-seventeen, as Child Abuse Awareness Month in Lacy Township, and we urge all citizens to do activities to strengthen families and communities, to provide the optimal environment for children to learn, grow, and thrive, so that children have the benefit of happy, healthy, and safe childhoods.
Nancy, do you want to come up? Or all of you?
Please.
All, take a picture. So, right, that's all right. You've got to face the cameras.
Somebody like to hold the proclamation?
Oh, Sue, thank you for taking...
Yes, I mean, we have friends.
And we're encouraging her.
Free to call on the House of Representatives for sure. Thank you very much. It's been a lot.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't have any add-ons for this agenda, so we can adjourn this one?
Okay. No add-ons means we will entertain a motion to close the caucus meeting.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to go immediately to the township, the township meeting, Township of Lacy. I'll read the statements. We'll say that the pledge of allegiance will be followed by a moment of silence. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Hansbury Park Press and the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, first reading of ordinance twenty-seventeen twelve, amending chapter three thirty-five of the Township Code entitled zoning.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey amending and supplementing chapter three thirty-five of the Township Code entitled zoning, so as to establish an inclusionary zoning ordinance. This is in regards to our COA settlement with the court master. The township needs to make some zoning changes and to do some amendments. This affects the inclusionary zone, which is Route Nine and Lacy Road corridor, which is the commercial corridor, and the lot frontage that we're changing is a hundred and fifty feet.
I have a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number two, second reading of ordinance twenty-seventeen D S O eight, setting the salaries for non-union employees.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey amending an ordinance entitled, in order to the Township of Lacy County, motion to state and New Jersey, affixing and determining salaries, wages, and compensation to the officers and employees and members of the governing body of the township. This is setting the two thousand and seventeen salaries for the management department heads, assistant department heads, and various management positions, and it came in at two percent.
Motion, please.
Open to the floor of the public hearing.
Right. Any public comments this evening on this motion?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number three, reading of ordinance twenty-seventeen oh nine, setting salaries for the Crossing Guards Union.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey amending and supplementing chapter three thirty-five of the Township Code entitled zoning, so as
Yes.
to establish an inclusionary zoning ordinance. This is in regards to our COA settlement with Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number, item number four, resolution twenty-seventeen one fifteen, authorizing
the court master. The township needs to make some zoning changes and to do some amendments. This affects the inclusionary zone, which is Route Nine and Lacy Road corridor, which
the refund of a building department fee.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing refund of a building department fee issued by the Lacy Township Building Department. This is the commercial corridor, and the lot frontage that we're changing is a hundred and fifty is a refund of twenty dollars. The customer wrote the check out incorrectly, and we owed feet.
I have a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald? her twenty dollars back from it.
Yes.
Move it. Second?
Mr. Pennis?
Yes. Second.
Mr. Juliano? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Curatola? Mr. Pennis?
Yes. Item number four, resolution twenty-seventeen one fifteen, authorizing the refund of a
Yes.
building department fee.
Mr. Juliano? Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing refund
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number, item number four, resolution twenty-seventeen one fifteen, authorizing
of a building department fee issued by the Lacy Township Building Department. This is a refund of twenty dollars. The customer wrote the check out incorrectly, and we owed
the refund of a building department fee.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing refund her twenty dollars back from it. of a building department fee issued by the Lacy Township Building Department. This
Move it. Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald? is a refund of twenty dollars. The customer wrote the check out incorrectly, and we owed
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola? her twenty dollars back from it.
Yes. Item number four, resolution twenty-seventeen one fifteen, authorizing the refund of a building Move it. Second? department fee.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing a
Second.
contract for the acceptance of credit cards for tax collections. Mr. McDonald? Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, awarding a contract
Yes.
for the acceptance of online credit card payments for tax collections, appoint and Mr. Pennis? pay. We went out to bid. This was the lowest responsible bidder for the collection and
Yes.
Mr. Juliano? use of credit cards and debit cards, either at the tax window or online. The service charge
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item five, resolution twenty-seventeen one eighteen, awarding contract for the acceptance
that you would pay to have a credit card is passed on to the user. We're not allowed
of credit cards for tax collections.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, awarding a contract to pass it on to the bulk of the ratepayers, and it's two point six nine percent with for the acceptance of online credit card payments for tax collections, appoint and a minimum, or a minimum charge, depending on the amount of the charge is. And they pay. We went out to bid. This was the lowest responsible bidder for the collection and also accept e-checks as well, and it's been a very successful program and convenience use of credit cards and debit cards, either at the tax window or online. The service to the public.
Move it.
charge that you would pay to have a credit card is passed on to the user. We're not allowed
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
to pass it on to the bulk of the ratepayers, and it's two point six nine percent with a minimum, or a minimum charge, depending on the amount of the charge is. And they also accept e-checks as well, and it's been a very successful program and convenience to the public.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number six, resolution twenty-seventeen one nineteen, awarding a contract for the Bayside Beach Maintenance dredging.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, awarding a contract for the Bayside Beach Maintenance dredging to Albert Marine Construction. Six bids were received on April seventh for this project. The lowest responsible bidder is Albert Marine Construction in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. This is, again, to do the Bayside Beach dredging at the mouth of the lagoon. It's about thirty-three hundred cubic yards that we're removing from that lagoon, and it will start somewheres after June first, which are the permit limits. We have to wait...
And just to be clear, which beach is Bayside Beach?
Bayside Beach is south of the Forked River Beach Bayfront Park.
Thank you.
So, if you looked on Google Maps, you'll see where the sholing is, and you'll know exactly where...
It's all the way down at the end of Beach Boulevard.
All right.
Yes.
Move it. We have a second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item seven, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty, awarding contract for the purchase of auto parts and accessories.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, awarding contracts for the purchase of auto parts to advance Fastener Industries, Barlow Automotive, Beechhaven Automotive, Eastern Warehouse Distributors, Chapman Ford Sales, and Grand Turk Equipment Company. This is being awarded under the Stafford Township Cooperative Purchasing. These are vendors that have bidded on this and have put in the lowest responsible prices, and the township has the right to use them if they wish to do so.
Motion? Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item ten, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-three, authorizing the acceptance of a tax lien premium payment.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the premium payment of six hundred dollars on tax lien certificate two thousand and twelve forty-five on block one forty-nine point oh one, lot one, to be turned over to the Township Treasurer to become part of the funds of the municipality in accordance with the provisions of NJSA fifty-four colon five dash thirty-three. When this went up for tax lien sale in two thousand and twelve, the bidder had bidded a premium of six hundred dollars. They had five years to foreclose on it. They failed to do it. The premium comes to the town.
Move it. Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item twelve, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-five, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel two thousand and seventeen taxes due on a property granted to one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption and refunding the resulting credit balance. This is on block fifteen seventy-eight, lot twenty-six point oh three.
Move it. Second?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item thirteen, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-six, awarding a contract to Caterpillar Financial Services.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, awarding a contract to Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation for the leasing of a Caterpillar compact track loader two ninety-nine D two in accordance with NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash one X C.
Move it. Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item twelve, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-five, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel two thousand and seventeen taxes due on a property granted to one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption and refunding the resulting credit balance. This is on block fifteen seventy-eight, lot twenty-six point oh three.
Move it. Second?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item fourteen, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-seven, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item twelve, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-five, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel two thousand and seventeen taxes due on a property granted to one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption and refunding the resulting credit balance. This is on block fifteen seventy-eight, lot twenty-six point oh three.
Move it. Second?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item eleven, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-four, authorizing the refund of a homestead rebate.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to refund homestead rebates for a disabled veteran. This is on block eleven forty-eight, lot twenty-six.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item twelve, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-seven, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item fifteen, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-eight, authorizing payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of five million, sixty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and nine cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item twelve, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-seven, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item fifteen, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-eight, authorizing payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of five million, sixty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and nine cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number nine, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-two, amending the temporary operating budget.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, providing for emergency temporary operating budget in accordance with the provisions of NJSA forty-eight colon four dash twenty. This is for us to start utilizing, well, they're actually working on the program now, but we need to expend the money, the distracted driver crackdown. We receive fifty-five hundred dollars in a grant, and it is throughout the month of April, and as you notice, if you text, you pay.
Absolutely. We have a motion.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item ten, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-three, authorizing the acceptance of a tax lien premium payment.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the premium payment of six hundred dollars on tax lien certificate two thousand and twelve forty-five on block one forty-nine point oh one, lot one, to be turned over to the Township Treasurer to become part of the funds of the municipality in accordance with the provisions of NJSA fifty-four colon five dash thirty-three. When this went up for tax lien sale in two thousand and twelve, the bidder had bidded a premium of six hundred dollars. They had five years to foreclose on it. They failed to do it. The premium comes to the town.
Move it. Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item twelve, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-three, authorizing the acceptance of a tax lien premium payment.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the premium payment of six hundred dollars on tax lien certificate two thousand and twelve forty-five on block one forty-nine point oh one, lot one, to be turned over to the Township Treasurer to become part of the funds of the municipality in accordance with the provisions of NJSA fifty-four colon five dash thirty-three. When this went up for tax lien sale in two thousand and twelve, the bidder had bidded a premium of six hundred dollars. They had five years to foreclose on it. They failed to do it. The premium comes to the town.
Move it. Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number eleven, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-four, authorizing the refund of a homestead rebate.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to refund homestead rebates for a disabled veteran. This is on block eleven forty-eight, lot twenty-six.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item twelve, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-seven, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number eleven, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-four, authorizing the refund of a homestead rebate.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to refund homestead rebates for a disabled veteran. This is on block eleven forty-eight, lot twenty-six.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item twelve, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-five, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel two thousand and seventeen taxes due on a property granted to one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption and refunding the resulting credit balance. This is on block fifteen seventy-eight, lot twenty-six point oh three.
Move it. Second?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item thirteen, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-six, awarding a contract to Caterpillar Financial Services.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, awarding a contract to Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation for the leasing of a Caterpillar compact track loader two ninety-nine D two in accordance with NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash one X C.
Move it. Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item fourteen, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-seven, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item fifteen, resolution twenty-seventeen one twenty-eight, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion to state and Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of five million, sixty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and nine cents.
Move it.
Second.[988.41]
MUA, but I'm going to now, because I want everybody to be aware that they're working on the hydrants for the flushing. It started April 10th, and it's going to go through the end of July. The housekeeping tasks necessary to ensure that the water delivered to your home is the highest quality possible. You may want to refrain from doing laundry during the day, Monday through Friday, when there are flushing in your area. If you call the MUA, they do have a set when, in different areas, when they're going to be flushing, so that's the best thing. And their phone number is (609) 693-8188. And anybody that answers the phone will be able to help you, let you know what areas they're doing when. Secondly, a letter came into my box about recycling problems at the county's MRPX. Things are being accepted wrong in there. For an example, we had, I don't know if you can see it, but question, "Do these four items have in common?" What do these four? Plastic bag, bowling ball, styrofoam cup, and garden hose. None of these should be in the recycling. They did find bowling balls in there, so forth and so on. It's, people have to, you know, and I think what's easier probably is to, you can go onto their website, and they'll tell you what is responsible for recycling and what isn't. And they can send you, you can download to get what I have right here. It's hard to see or to go over the whole thing, but it tells you, no shredded paper, do not, you know, tie or bundle paper. It's just a lot of different things and some of the things that are acceptable. So if we could probably get a little bit better with that, then, you know, I think it'd be good for everybody. Third, Little League, opening day was last Saturday. The mayor and I attended that. As always, the kids had a great time. The players, it looks like the, as they were coming out, it was never stopping, the team, so it was a lot of participants, a lot of young children that did. And it's a little hard on the parents, but they understand it, you know, it's $250 to do it, and it's, and it's rough on them, you know, but they enjoy it, the kids, and we enjoy doing for them the parks. That's what Public Works does the best in this town. Like everything else, they do is good, but that is the best. I mean, the parks were phenomenal. They had rained all that week, and it-
You'd never know.
No, you would never know that it hadn't rained. Lacy Soccer and Lacrosse seasons started April 1st, same thing, fields, everybody's down there using them. It looks great. I went down there, too. Girls softball at Gilly Park, opening day will begin April 22nd. That's when we have our opening day ceremonies down there. Bayfront Park Project is progressing. Hopefully, hopefully, we'll have in a Memorial Day ribbon cutting ceremony, but it's based on the playground equipment and the gazebo delivery. Overall, the project and the contractor, if anybody's gone down there, it's excellent, excellent job they're doing. Casey overseeing the whole project, and every day, it's, it's getting, it's getting there. I walked the walk path there. Tim, you did too, right?
Yes, I did.
Pretty, it's, it's going to be a beautiful park when it's done. Township Tonight, of course, awarded a contract to Albert Marine for the dredging of Bayside Beach Lagoon, focusing on the main lagoon and the two entering lagoons 200 feet down. If nobody knows where that is, that's the end of Beach Boulevard. You go all the way down to the end, and that is Bayside Beach area there. That's the lagoon they're talking about. So they're going to be dredging down the first two lagoons 200 feet because the silt that was down there, they couldn't, person couldn't even park their boat down there. Paving projects for the year will involve East Lacy Road, end to end, and the conclusion of Bayberry Village. That's our two main paving projects this year. Huffy Wallace Parks, I don't know, Tim, are you gonna-
I'll talk about it.
You want to speak about that?
Yeah.
That's about it, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And it's been great. Everybody enjoy the spring weather, and Happy Easter and Passover. So everybody enjoy. Enjoy the family, that's the main thing. Thank you.
Committeeman Kennas.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm feeling a bit chatty tonight.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy and healthy Easter. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Committeeman Kennas. Committeeman McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. As Committeeman Giuliani talked about, Huffy Wallace Park, which is, I believe, the first park that was built here in Lacy.
Yes, it is. First recognized park.
First recognized park that was built here in Lacy. We are in the budget, we put it in the budget. How much was it, Mayor?
$240,000.
$240,000 to redo it. And, let me just, is there a table down there or a chair? I just want to show this. This is, this is what it's going to look like when it's done. If anybody has gone by Huffy Wallace Park and looked at it, you will see that it is in complete disrepair. The basketball court is, is, has come up. The, the swings and stuff for the kids are bad. It's just in bad, bad repair, and it needs to be done. And so when, once we pass the budget, this is what it's going to be looking like here, the ball fields and stuff. It's, it's going to be beautiful. Farmer's Market is back, coming back soon. And after much discussion during the winter time as to where we could move it, maybe make it better, we couldn't find a spot, so it's going to go back to the Forkett River Methodist, Methodist Church. And that's going to be on Fridays. We've looked at trying to maybe move this day, another day to make it a little bit more convenient for people, because we know Fridays is a tough time to get down Lacy Road and so forth, but we just, we just couldn't come to an agreement on it. So that's, that takes care of that. The Bayfront Park, I can't wait for that thing to open. I travel the state, and a lot of times I'll eat my lunch up at a Wawa or 7-Eleven or something. I grab a sandwich, I'll go find a park to sit in while I eat my lunch. And I can tell you this, I've walked it. There's not a, it's absolutely gorgeous down there. And Casey, Casey Parker is in charge of it, as you can see from our other part, does a magnificent job, and I can't wait to see what the, what this thing finally looks at. And speaking of Casey Parker, I just, sometimes, sometimes we take things for granted, and we really shouldn't take Public Works for granted. They work hard, they do the job. The work is never ending. It's always coming, coming, coming. And I think one of the things is, we approved it tonight, was the Caterpillar thing. Casey wanted this piece of equipment. Unfortunately, we didn't have it in the budget form. He came back, figured out a way to do it, and he's done it, basically zero increase to us. No, not basically, there is zero increase to the budget whatsoever. And I, I just want to commend him, because that's what I'd like for all our department heads to be doing, is to figure out ways to do things a little bit better, a little bit more efficiently than, without having to increase on the taxpayer. So a big kudos out to Casey Parker and the Department of Public Works. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. My comments will be brief this evening, and I certainly want to wish everyone a Happy Easter, Happy Passover. Give a couple of quick updates on the last two weeks. I've been able to meet with our liaison from Jersey Central Power and Light. Periodically, we meet with them. We'll meet with them with our police chief, our police captain. That was the case this time as well. And so what we do is, we talk about updating critical lists for infrastructure. We, as a committee, me personally, I'll receive texts during different storm events, and that could be a storm or a thunderstorm at any point in the year. As soon as any power goes out, I'll get an update, what part of town. So that's, it's been a good relationship with JCPN. And then with that information in real time, off the grid, we're able to respond and react a little bit quicker with our emergency services, police. We have two senior communities. There are people that may be infirm around town, immobile. And so we need that information, and we need to know and keep up with our infrastructure, especially during storm time. It was my unique pleasure to swear in Bamber Lakes and their executive board and their police chief at a fire installation dinner, I believe it was last Saturday evening. As I have often said, these are the people that run towards danger and not away from it. So very grateful for them, especially Bamber, who is really dealing with a lot of our forest fires out there, of course, with Forkett and Lenoka as well. Our deputy mayor talked about Little League, another one of the great things that we get to do. I'm looking very forward. I have a daughter. I know our deputy mayor has a daughter and a son, but I'm all about girl power, so I'm looking forward to girls softball, to throw out that first pitch, along with my colleagues on the governing body. Certainly look forward to that, as we do every year. I want to dovetail on a couple of other things that were said tonight. We heard Committeeman McDonald talk about no increase to the budget. We also heard about distracted driving. April's also distracted driving month, and people get off the parkway, they come down Lacy Road, they'll see the you text, you drive, you lose. That's at no cost to the taxpayer. The chief has been very above board as a department head with reaching out to New Jersey Highway and Traffic Safety, getting different grants for you click it, click it or ticket, you text, you drive, you lose, drive sober, get pulled over. This comes to pay overtime for any officers that might be dispatched on those particular details. And I will tell you, as far as civil court goes, that more and more of this is turning up now. We don't know, like when I talk to the kids at the high school, you know, I talk at high schools all the time, as a matter of course, during prom season. Very shortly, a week from today, I'll be with the chief at Lacy High School. So this is coming up more and more often, summer, summer safe driving season. We go from about 580,000 people in the county to over a million on the 4th of July weekends, Memorial Day holidays. This is, if the car, I believe, is '09 or newer, there's essentially a black box in there, just like we hear when airplane tragedies happen. They'll know if you didn't try to step on the brakes, if you're texting and smash somebody at 40 miles an hour. So I'm not going to sit here and pontificate. I just don't like seeing all these things come across the desk, and it's very, it's, it's completely, it's something that doesn't need to happen. So I'm just hopeful that it stops, and people do put the phone down. Lastly, I'd just like to talk about, I believe the other day, our Board of Chosen Freeholders had said that this county is not a sanctuary county. I wanted to reiterate that about Lacy Township. We are not a sanctu-, I know that question was posed some time ago. We are not a sanctuary city. We treat everyone with respect, like I said, but we are not Seattle, and we are not San Francisco, and we're going to follow whatever federal laws come down. We, to the best of my knowledge, do not receive any federal funding. Some of those other larger cities do, and that may be in jeopardy now with this new presidential administration, I'm not sure. But I wanted to be crystal clear on that point. Everyone is welcomed here, but laws are the guide rails of society. Without them, we have chaos, and we won't have chaos in Lacy Township. So I'm just here to say that and be very clear about it. And with that, we'll open up the Florida Public Committee. Yes, sir? Name an address, please.
Captain Flynn, Davis Avenue.
Yes, sir.
You know how our, our dinner a month ago, we said it was all smiles, Pete? Well, you can see I'm not smiling anymore.
I can see that, yeah.
Yep. When you became mayor, you said, I'm sure you have goals or things you'd like to accomplish, correct? Was one of them to be the mayor when Casey Parker retires? Because that's the direction I see things go. Casey's been here for 25 years, has given his heart and soul to this township, and I could see frustration in him, because this committee, I don't know what direction you guys are going into, if you want to downsize the department, or if you want to start something a lot more workout, the projects that he puts in for. Nikki, you mentioned two paving projects. One of those paving projects is carried over from last year, Lacy Road, which was grant money. So technically, you're only doing one paving project this year. Last year, I remember Steve talking about how we have to pave roads, how we have to pave roads. Unfortunately, I wasn't at the budget meeting, because I think Veronica heard I was going on vacation and scheduled the meeting.
That's not the case.
Don't worry, I won't miss it this year. So I believe Casey put in for six projects to be paid.
Oh, there was, there was a lot of projects, yes, yes, yes.
I do believe-
The list never gets shorter.
You'll never get sure.
One or two of them have been up there for seven years.
You're correct.
Seven years. Do you, I, do you listen when he speaks, what the average life of a road is? How many, how many years?
Well, it depends on the volume of traffic, but most of the time, you can only get 20 years out of a low-volume road.
Well, those two areas are pushing 30 years.
That's correct.
27.
Yeah. You know, I, I've been here for 30 years, working, and that's what we did when I came to work here 30 years ago. We would pave from when the budget was approved till the money ran out, which was spring, summer, and into fall. From when I first started until the early 90s, late 80s, early 90s, where there was no paving done. And then things started to fall apart. And then in 92, Casey came on with a new committee, and it was all about infrastructure, fixing the roads. Well, guess what? We're headed back to 19, prior 1992, with the infrastructure in this township, because you guys don't want to fund the projects. There's some kind of number, I don't know what it is, but you will not go beyond bonding for it. I'm not trying to say put the town in major debt, but there's like a fixed number that you are stuck at, you will not go past. What is it, Veronica?
I don't know. It varies every year, depending on what-
But there's like a, there's like a number you will not-
We don't like to, okay, totally, fully bonding, we don't like to over 10 million. Okay.
Why is that?
Well, it changes your rate. Changes your rate, and changes your, your rating on that, and it also changes the interest rate. We've always, I don't, I don't care what years it's been, back to 92, 93, we've always stayed under the 10 million.
So things could start to fall apart, and we're not going to go beyond.
I'm not telling you that, that's up to 45%.
No, but that's, that's what's happening. That's what's happening. The infrastructure in this town is starting to go down in tubes again, prior to Casey coming on board. That man works 10, 11 hours a day, five days a week. And you think when he goes home, he's, he's done working? No. Who wrote the grant for the, for the, for Bayfront Park?
It was a cooperation of the engineering firm and Casey's vision, yes.
Yeah, so he didn't just sit at work and do that grant. He sat at home and did work. He doesn't just stop working when he punches out. He's on the job. We, it snows. First one here, last one to go. He gives his heart and soul to this town. And you guys, I mean, you try and support him, but lately, it doesn't seem that way. He wants to get stuff done before things completely fall apart around him. Well, it's starting to crumble. The equipment in the back is starting to go. One of the dump, actually, two of the dump trucks this year, the bodies were falling off of. The guy wants to go start to raise the body, boom, the frame snapped. Thank God he caught it quick enough before it was either, it snapped while it was up in the air, or it flipped, you know, when it's going up in the air, boom, it could've snapped the frame, body flips over, rips the body off the, the truck. There's three single axles that are 30 years old. A tandem is 30 years old, another single axle is 29 years old. Four, those four single axles, they all go out salt. Do you think that they're going to survive much longer? No, they're not. The salt is wreaking havoc on everything, just besides the 30 years old.
So give me an opportunity to respond, on behalf of the whole committee. It's not me up here alone. When we vote, we vote as a group of five. There's not an evening that goes by that's not televised, where at least one of us, or the majority of us, don't say great things. I think you heard it a few minutes ago.
Yeah, man.
We, we understand-
I get it, Mr. McDonald praised him. I get it. You know how much money he saves you guys in engineering fees every year?
Yeah.
Because he gets the plans, and he goes out and lays the jobs out himself. Back before he came here, that didn't happen. He used to have to pay your engineers again to come and lay the jobs out. You're, if, if, when he leaves, this town is going to be sorry, because you're not going to find anyone that's going to care and put in as much time as he does about this township. No one with his background and knowledge.
And Kevin, if the five of us could fund each, just for Cranberry Hill alone, I remember that road project was over $910,000. As far as capital purchases, since I've been up here, this is my fourth year, I believe that we've purchased machinery to the tune of a little over a million dollars. I don't have the exact list, but in the last four years. So you, so that, that part of this township has been a recipient of, of attention and detail. We hear him when he talks, we meet with him. As far as Veronica goes, he comes here, he pleads his case like the department heads, we show everyone respect. The fact of the matter is, we can't do everything every year. We have, we have a budget, and we try to do what we can. We purchased a $750,000 truck for Forkett River Fire. We, now, we also had to purchase ambulances. We have union obligations. We believe we've been very fair and above board with different unions around town. The thing is, we give our level best to take care of valuable employees like yourself, and not only are you an employee, you are a volunteer in our fire. We understand that. We also have to answer to the taxpayer. I would like nothing more than to have a boundless budget, to take care of everything, anything that we could, from the dock pilings downtown, to instead of doing anything in phases, I'd like to have it all done at once.
But see now, I know, I mean, that's no good, do it all once, because that's what happened back in the 80s, when the town was rich. This town used to get the money directly from the power plant.
Correct.
And in 1986, they bought a fire truck. 87, they bought a fire-
Correct.
88, 89. And in 1987, they bought four dump trucks, a paver, this, that-
Kevin, you're bringing, you're making my point for me. Let me, let me just finish.
You're supposed to spread things out like you haven't been.
As that plant begins its closure process, and I've been very above board about, with this, anywhere, any civic organization I speak to, when we're looking at a closure for that plant, and that's going to, that decommissioning process is going to take eight to 10 years, but each one of those years, that revenue stream is going to dry up. We have to plan like that. I can't let the legacy of this committee be poor planning and to overbuy and overpurchase. At the same time, I have to take care of employees, keep food on their table, do right by them, because they've done right by us. You've done right by us twice, because as I mentioned previously, you're a volunteer. But when you're sitting in these chairs, you have to think about where your revenues come from. I, Committeeman Quinn's not here tonight, he's been a great asset. Stephen Kennas has been a great asset. They're working on town center designation, bring more tax ratables in here, responsible ratables, ratables that won't pollute, ratables that'll pay. We, we sit down, and we're going to look each year at what we can purchase. There's no hidden agenda. This budget process is an open public meeting. We're on television right now. But we have multiple departments. We have recreation department, we've got to take care of kids in the summer. We have police needs to keep, like I said, the guide rails on society. We know you need machines. We have union obligations. All of these things are part of it. It's no easy task. It's what we signed up for, and I relish, I love that challenge. And I think we've been very above board in the municipal part of it here. Your taxes are going up $27 per house for a $275,000 home, $275,600 home. They're going up from adoption to adoption, last year to this year, about, on the municipal side now, about 27 bucks. Tonight, we leased to purchase another machine. I believe the price tag of that machine for grading the roads is $110,000. We've put in a maximum effort. We don't malign anybody. We know how valuable Casey is. I know personally how valuable he is, and I know, I see him out there, he's using rakes. If something happens at a park, it's on a Sunday, the man doesn't even punch a clock. He's, he's a godsend for the community. We do what we can do. I wanted you to know all these things, and we've got to look forward to the future, too, with that plan as well. Mayor, Mayor.
If I may, I've had, over the last three or four weeks, had a lot of conversations with Casey. We're very fortunate to have Casey. Yes, and yes, he is extremely frustrated by some of our act-
So we can see it back at work. We can see it.
I understand that. I understand that. And we're trying to work with Casey. We do, we recognize we do have a problem back there. We have a major problem back there with the equipment, but we cannot fix it all at one time. We just cannot do it.
No, because that would be the worst scenario, because you can't buy all them dump trucks at the front, and get consumed by a giant number.
But at the same time, we still got to take care of the rest of the town. And the, and it, it's, it's not an endless, endless stream of money coming in here. So we're trying to work with it. Casey's starting to understand our predicament a little bit better. We're starting to understand his predicament a little bit better. We're working together. Like I said, I thought it was great the way he came up with this new piece of equipment, because he wasn't getting it. And he came to us, so, said that I can do some things here, we can do it here, can I do this? We looked at it and said, is it costing the township any more money? He said, no. Is it coming out of another person's budget? He said, no. I double-checked that with Linda Cavello, our CFO. It's not coming out of anywhere, it's coming out of his budget. He figured it out. That's what we want. That's exactly what we want. And you've got to understand, when that plant closes, and we'll know in 2018, the exact date that plant goes offline, we're going to have some problems. Okay? Go do yourself some, research nuclear power plants that have closed, and look what's happened to those towns around them. I am scared to death about that. Now, we caught a break with the pipeline, with the gas line, and hopefully, we can get it up here and put a gas, a gas-
I didn't put those metal poles down the parkway for nothing. Everything is there.
I understand, I understand, I understand. But that, you got to understand, that's 10 to 15 years away, just for the permits, just for the permits in this state. So we're going to have some serious problems here. Now, I understand that the law is, they got to give us the same amount of money, so forth and so on, but that's the law, that can be changed. So we, we have to go, when we start looking at the budget, we start looking at five, 10, 15 years, we got to take the worst-case scenario. Have to. And say, what happens if that plant closes, and they cut back from 11 million to 10 million? Or, or to a 9 million? We only get 9 million. Then what happens? Where are we making those cuts? Where, where are we doing that? Because we can't survive. So that's what we're trying to do here. And yes, it's very frustrating. Veronica will tell you, it's extremely frustrating for her. It's frustrating for all our department chairmans, and unfortunately, Casey's taking the brunt of it. So we are talking to him as much as possible, and we will get through this. And we are going to do some of these roadworks, and we are going to replace some of those equipment back there, but it's going to take us some time. And I understand that. That's why we gave you, when he asked for it, he said, is this the stuff that'll help you maintain these for a little while longer? He said, yes, we gave it to him. That's the reason why we're, we're trying to, we're just trying to string this along until we can figure out what's going to happen with the power.
And we've been purchasing the last several years for DPW. We just, that's the, the fact of the matter. I mean, there's been trucks, there's been, I believe, a crane, now there's a road grader. You know, we haven't put everything on both.
Two saddle axles, a tandem, and a roll-off. Okay? That's what. But those other trucks that are 30 years old, those are the trucks that are pushing the snow in these bigger storms. Those little trucks, the Mason dumps, they don't push to snow like the big trucks do. And sooner or later, they're going to break, and they're not going to be able to be replaced. And, you know, we, it was the joke that it's going to be a, a snowstorm that, that pushes Casey out, because he doesn't like snow. Because he, he's the first one here, the last one to go. He's out there in the streets with the guys, making sure everything's okay, checking on things. His phone is blown up, because he's getting the complaints from everybody, because their street wasn't plowed first, or whatever it may be. He takes it all at the heart. He takes that personally, that, you know, granted, there's going to be complaints no matter what in a snowstorm, but every one of those complaints, he takes it to heart, and it's, it's, because he cares about this town. this town. You're never gonna find another person to fill his shoes.
When Casey finally calls a career, and we hope it's not for a long, long time, we, I don't know, we could replace it.
Then you're...
I don't know, I don't know. Who knows?
You'll find someone, but they're not gonna get it.
You're right.
They're all like he does.
No, no, you're right. You're right about that. I've said it a million times, we're blessed to have it. But again, we still have, it's not an endless pot. It's not an endless stream of money coming through this town. We recognize the problem. We're going to be dealing with the problem as best we can, but we've got that power plant thing hanging over our head.
And we've got to look to the future.
And, and we...
We can't just have year-to-year budgets. We need to start looking at things down the road and make things more sustainable. That's the whole nut in New Jersey. They say the joke on the, on the radio in the morning, listen to one oh one five, less person leave New Jersey, turn the lights out. Well, I say damn to that. I wanna stay here and I, I wanna try to make it work. I wanna make it affordable for the young person coming up and seniors in both communities and everybody in the middle. And to do that, you have to make hard tr- it's not easy. And nobody, listen, we know Casey feels the pain. We, we have spirited conversations in the back there. We feel the pain. We take it personally. We love it. We have skin in this game here too. You know where I live, I'm right down the street. I mean, we, this is our home too. So, we're working on it. We give you our, we, we've shown good faith in the last three, four, or five years. We're gonna work on it next year and we're gonna work on it years after that. But that's the best I could give you tonight.
And now, while you're speaking of that new fire truck...
Yes, sir.
You know Ray asked for air packs. Did you fund them? No. And I thank Exelon for the fifteen thousand dollar check, but that doesn't even cover the cost of two. He asked for eight.
Chief Bram Hall prioritized what he needed. We were fortunate enough to have that great corporate partner there that funded him.
That doesn't cover two. We're still short five.
Cap, as the mayor said, and I had this conversation with you, he prioritized his list and that was not a priority that he gave us.
Well, there's not gonna be enough air packs to put on that truck. So, however many air packs are on it, that's all the guys are getting on that truck. So, it will not be able to be fully staffed. If it was five packs, we'd cost you forty thousand dollars.
Kevin, we don't want anybody to be without any...
Well, I'm gonna talk on the list, police and fire. Well, Pete, I'm letting you know, there's not enough air packs to put on that brand-new fire truck. I'm letting you know. So, maybe you need to go talk to Ray and he can fill you in a little more.
And I'll talk to Ray in the morning.
But Kevin, you know, part of, part of the budget, we're also giving the...
You have to come up with five percent of forty thousand.
No, 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 that's the bonding game. And then you lose your credit rating.
Opposed to ten million already, Veronica.
We're right there.
Let me, let me...
We went to permanent financing last year for a bunch of old notes and bonds from the years, cause we do temporary financing and we're over nine million that we went to permanent financing on. And then we just, we're bonding temporary notes for this year, uh...
One million four hundred?
Four ninety-six.
Yeah, one million five, one, one point five million, basically.
Let me just jump in here for a second. Kevin, I, I've done extensive research on the closing of power plants. Two in particular, Vermont Yankee, they wound up closing their police force and went to county, county police force because they couldn't afford to play, pay their police force anymore. And the other was Zion, the, the town of Zion in northern Illinois, very similar to Lacey Township population, it's about twenty-five thousand. It's right on the shore of Lake Michigan. Their plant closed approximately ten years ago and they've not recovered. Their tax rate went up a hundred and fifty percent. What happens when your tax rate goes up that high? Less people wanna buy your houses. Less people wanna buy your houses, they become essentially abandoned houses. So, the problem they're having is not only can people not afford the taxes, they don't wanna move there because the property's dilapidated, because they're turning into like, uh, rentals. And then the, the people that own houses can't afford to maintain them because that math doesn't work. Can't rent out a single-family house to somebody and expect them to take care of it. So, the property values keep going down. So, they're in a, a constant spiral, uh, on their tax rate and their, and the money they're able to bring in the town. In addition to that, we have to look, the worst-case scenario for that plant is that not only do we not get the gas line, which I'm not holding out hope for, that would be years, if not decades, that we're able to get that, you have to remember that that waste isn't going anywhere. There will be very difficult with anything other than an energy company coming into the, to build on that property because they don't, any other company is not gonna want the liability of having their workers next to nuclear waste. So, when we're looking at everything in the town in terms of where we're getting our revenue from, that is first and foremost, the first part of the pie, first part of the thing that, first thing we look at. And since it's closing in a couple of years from now, or supposed to be, um, that's gonna cause, until something changes, not everything will be funded less, in my opinion. So, that's what you're looking at going forward. So, it's, has, it's, so the, everybody's gonna have to learn to do more with less. Police station, the public...
Last year was a prime example, I'll tell you, because you approved the budget. The department heads were given their numbers. You approved your budget in June, in September, they're all getting notices that spending is done in October. So...
If they outspent their budget...
No, 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 they weren't even close to outspending their budget. Weren't close to outspending their budget because this was the Band-Aid. Take it, you're done spending and take the money so we didn't have to defer school taxes this year. We're putting, we're, we're putting it, for all those years, we deferred school taxes. The department heads budgeted their years, their year, trying to get through the year with their money. Yet, you give them three months to spend it and you pull the plug in October, because that's what happened. And what happened was, after that, Linda, we got the same, yay or nay, everybody put in her paperwork to buy the stuff that they were gonna buy, put it in, and pretty much everything got denied, denied. So, you weren't giving their, it may have said it on paper, but in all reality, the departments were not given their full budgets.
We've done that the past couple of years, Kevin.
But it was...
Yes, we did.
I know, but...
Earlier this past year, you're correct.
Yeah, and it's, so, how do you...
We're trying to build our surplus so that we don't have to do these gimmicks as deferring school tax, because it is a gimmick, um, and trying to keep, you know, funding ourselves versus using the gimmicks that the state allows you to use. So, that's what we're trying to do by keeping the money here versus doing the gimmicks and try, you know, we sold the property over there to Walters Development Group, the money that we got from that, we're trying to spread out over a three-year budget versus a one-year budget to try to, you know, fund ourselves.
Yeah, at the end of the day, we have to make sure we try and hit our revenue numbers. It's as simple as that.
Yes.
See, Ray put in to purchase a pack at the end of last year because he had the money. Well, that would've been one less to put in for this year, but he wasn't allowed to purchase it. And now, we're behind the eight ball again because that's one less pack to put on a truck this year because it wasn't funded.
I don't know, we funded for the, I know we bought a, we bought a fire truck last year.
No, but, and you put in for air packs for this year, it was on his list of funding.
Yeah, I'm sure and we can, and we, but we wound up, you know, again, we only have, there's only so much money in the pot. We, I just, we can't keep borrowing. Just can't.
Yeah, if we keep borrowing, it's the equivalent of having a cast iron soldier just built on clay feet. I won't do that to the township. That does nobody any good. That's window dressing. And, and that's irresponsible to do at home. I don't do it, I can't do it. If you and I do it, it's trouble. Okay?
Well, that's against me, I mean, like...
You keep saying, you told me, hang on a second.
You deferred in the previous year though. That's a gimmick.
Yeah, but I, we weren't able to not do it.
Yeah.
And you told me, you told me once...
But that's a gimmick. You okay that? You approved the budget to defer school taxes, so you just admitted, it's a gimmick.
What choice did we have?
But we didn't have a choice. We're trying to not use those things and to self-fund ourselves. So, we're trying to get out of those mechanisms that we've been using.
But that's slightly beside, the, the firm has school taxes, I never quite understood why...
It's a paperwork snafu.
That's all it is.
It's all it is.
Yes, I know, I understand what it is, but they get, they're getting their money anyway. There's getting a later date.
It's not like we're not giving the schools a hundred percent.
Yes, they're getting their money.
They're getting their money anyways.
It's a snafu way of getting things, yeah.
Hang on a second. Kevin, you had said to me once a, a while ago, I don't know if you'll recall, Pete, just buy the fire truck. It's thirty thousand down, about twenty, I don't remember the numbers, for argument's sake, twenty-five hundred dollars a month for thirty years. Okay? I...
Because the one trucker got rid of, we stretched forty-nine years of, so...
Well, that's a big fee to sign.
Anyway, two for one, so we're trying, we've been trying to work with it.
We, and we, I think we've shown you goodwill as well. We have a brand-new truck. We've had about a million dollars' worth of, of items in DPW in the last four years. If you include tonight, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We'll probably end up purchasing that. I don't speak for the rest of the committee. We, we support DPW and we are supporting our police and fire. And I, I would challenge anybody to disagree with that statement. That said, yeah, we, we could bond for a lot. We've worked hard to earn our credit rating. But then, to do what? To fall down in a credit rating, cost more to borrow, go into deeper debt for a longer period of time? We gotta be smart about it and like Tim said, we gotta take a look at what's closing here in the next couple of years.
Well, then I gotta, then, I'm not saying I'm against the route, I'm not saying I'm for the route, but how much money is sitting out there to build that road and how much does it cost?
We haven't borrowed against that bond yet.
Well, the first bond was what, three million? And he spent how much of that bond?
A million.
So, there's two million left on that.
Which we haven't borrowed that two million.
And you did that Wednesday morning, day after election, three million dollar bond, right?
Uh, yeah, we posted a number, yeah. But we didn't borrow against that.
No, but there's, it's sitting there. So, there's five million, did that go against your ten million?
No.
So, there's five...
Cause I haven't borrowed it yet.
But there's five million dollars sitting out there that at a swipe of a pen, it's yours to spend. At one, how much is it, what was the bid, the estimate to build the road?
Yeah, but it is...
Two, I think it was two point one and we are getting a little bit over a million from the state of New Jersey for that. So, it would cost us a million dollars to, you know...
And that's from Lacey Road to Home Depot or is you going to all the musket or...
Lacey Road to Home Depot with the drainage basins that are necessary for the Barnegat rail trail.
So, that's where the road's gonna stop right there?
At this point, yes. That's the only intentions that the township has is to go to Home Depot.
And that's working the same way that Bayside Park is. We have a grant that we're planning on spending. That's where it comes down to. If we didn't, if we didn't have, I can tell you right now that if we did not have the grant for Bayside Park, I doubt we would be doing it.
They were not giving me the project.
That was a one point three million dollar project, which I think's insane, but we only had the, we, we had the grant for it. If we didn't have the grant for it, that wouldn't be getting done.
Kevin, I am looking for a grant for the Barnegat Pines over here. Um, there's, you know, we wanna reroute some of the drainage to help with the quali, water quality of lakes. There's some water quality grants out there. I am looking into that. Also, we need to do some restructuring of Bamber Dam because that's falling apart. I am looking into a grant through that, through, through the dam safety regulations. There's a grant there. So, I'm trying to find money so that I can get funding because the only way that we're gonna get these projects approved.
And I'm no, I'm no road engineer or anything, but I think it would be wise to make that intersection, if you're gonna build the road, Lacey Road and a rail trail, to go across into the pines and tie it to the railroad avenue.
That's already part of my, uh, that was part of the budget a couple of years ago to do that. Um, it was about a three hundred thousand dollar project to do that, to tie that in. So, that is part of the thought con, thought process because the county would then most likely put a traffic light there to help the schools out and they would prefer a four-way actuary versus a, a three-way actuary because they have all the conduit in the road and everything that, for that. So, that is already on the agenda as a thought process.
And Kevin, we know you have good intentions. I know you're valued to the community, right? We just ask for the same from you. We got challenges here too. We're working with what we can do. And we're gonna continue the conversation. I don't know how long you wanna continue it tonight.
Well, Mike, well, Mike, someday, Pete, I'll tell you what, Pete, someday, I'm gonna sit up there and you can stand up and you can beat me up. Cause I promise you, I'm gonna sit on that dock. I told Gary now, I'm telling you that. I'm gonna sit up there.
I, I already informed the mayor that that was your goal one day.
I will.
I've heard it.
And trust me.
And you're a good man and best of luck. Any other comment? Yes, sir.
Jesse here, from Underwater Drive.
Yes, sir.
Just wanna piggyback a little bit. Uh, you said we have a gas line over by the power plant?
No, no, the, uh, the Pine Lands gas line.
We do have a gas line.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, right. And that, when the, the Pine Lands approve that, the idea is we'll be able to tap into that and run it up here and, and put the, uh, a gas electric company on that, on that piece of property. There's one back there now in case the power plant goes down.
Yeah, yeah. So, why would we expand on the gas plant taking over instead of like decommissioning and cut, turn the whole thing into...
Well, they, okay, first of all, the decommission's about sixty, seventy years. And that, those nuclear spent fuel rods will never leave Lacey Township, okay? Uh, because Yucca Mountain got canceled by Senator, Senator Harry Reid, okay? So, there's, there's a couple of moving parts here. First part is we never, Lacey Township never agreed to maintain spent fuel rods forever. So, there's some money out there through your electric bill that we're, we're working